I'd like to call the order. The Charter Township of Oxford zoning board appeals regular meeting from Monday, June the 13th, 2016. If everyone please stand, pay respects to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Corey Secretary, please note the roll.
No need.
Next item on our agenda is the approval of the seating's agendas. Any changes, modifications? None? To entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve the tonight's agenda.
Mr. Walters?
I'll support.
Support by Roser. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Moving on to item number five, approval of minutes from last month's meeting, our special meeting of May the 23rd, 2016. I didn't see anything.
I didn't either.
I'll move to approve the minutes as presented.
Second.
Moving seconded.
Bailey.
Bailey. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Moving on to public comments not on the seating's agenda. So, anyone from the audience that wish to speak on something that's not on the agenda, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll close that part of the agenda and move on to regular business. Our first item is 7A, which is ZBA 005.16, proposed to construct a 12,913 square foot addition to be used as a warehouse at 9595 South Lapeer Road, Oxford, Michigan, 48371. Parcel 0426303008 and 009. The applicant is M.D. Hubbard Springs Company, address 595 South Lapeer Road, Oxford, Michigan, 48371. The subject parcel, the subject property is located in an I-1 industrial zoning district on the east side of Lapeer Road, north of Oakdale Road. Approval of this application as submitted would require a variance according to zoning ordinance, section 67A, article 3.7, schedule of district regulations. The procedure that will follow this evening and on this item and on the second item will be the same. We'll have an applicant statement, we'll open a public hearing, we'll take public comments, we'll close the public hearing, we'll take board member, any board member or administrative comments, we'll have board member questions and comments, there'll be a finding of fact, there'll be a motion, there'll be a board member discussion and comment, and then finally there'll be a vote. So, is the applicant here for item 7A?
If I may?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm on the planning commission and the zoning board of appeals, so at this point, due to conflict of interest laws, I can't vote twice on the same issues. I'll be stepping down. The board has the minutes and the motion from the previous planning commission meeting. I didn't know if there was any questions related to that before I stepped down.
Any questions?
And you voted at that meeting, that's why you're stepping down.
Yep, I'm required to vote at the first meeting I attend, so that was that meeting. And I do note on the second item for tonight's agenda, we also have the 2,010 minutes from when the CBA acted the first time, and I was on the board back then, so make sure you take a look at that as well. That's why I am going to step down.
Thank you, Mr. Roser.
Thank you.
Gentlemen, please come forward and state your name.
My name is Charles Hubbard, and I'm president of M.D. Hubbard Spring Company here in Oxford.
What are you proposing for us this evening, sir?
We are wanting to make an addition to the existing plant located at 595 South Lapeer Road, and continue the southern direction of the plant, which would require us to have a, I think it's a 15-foot, 8-inch setback line from the property line on the east side of the property to the new addition, so the new addition would stay in line with the existing building, and it, as a result, would give us more room on the west side for turning trucks that would ever, if we ever wanted to make an addition into the west side of the building, with a truck, additional truck well, or any kind of access on the west side of the building, we would have more room there to swing trucks in and out, or rotate them around, or park them, or whatever. The property gets narrower the more you go south. It's not a rectangular piece, it's just, it gets narrower the more south you go, and therefore, it is more critical the further south you go, and it's more critical that we be allowed to continue the existing property line, or the existing building lines, the further south we go, so we can manipulate trucks in there.
And the other one too, about the flow of materials and your line of...
And then, on the inside of the new addition, it would also allow us to keep existing aisle ways in line with the exist, with the existing aisle ways in the old building, and not have to go zigzagging around as we go north to south, or south to north with a fork truck, or moving any machinery, or whatever.
Question for you. Was there something, this property was resumbed, wasn't it?
Correct.
Do you know when or about that occurred?
I'm getting older. I might remember it as the best. It seems like it was just a couple of years ago.
2013.
2013. Answer to your question, sorry. I knew the answer to that. Okay. Any questions of the applicant? No questions here. Okay. Mr. Walters, Mr. Bailey?
No questions.
I had a question. On the, on the drawing, it's showing a 15-foot flat, basically a 15-foot from your, I guess it would be your rear, wouldn't it? Your rear setback, right?
We consider it the rear, it's from the, from the eastern side, yes.
Yeah, and, and the proposal, is that a 15-foot, 8-inch then? Is that, or is it, what's the correct variance that you're asking for?
That's the 15-foot, 8-inch, that's from the property line to the south corner. See, the plan's showing 15 feet.
15.3 to the existing building?
I'm asking because it looks like it's, that, that property line is kind of on an angle or a wedge, right?
Correct. The property is a wedge, kind of.
But the fault is pretty much at the easterly of the property line.
It would stay parallel with the eastern property line, and it would be the same distance as the existing building is to the property line.
So, on this plan, it's showing 15-foot, or 15.3 feet, right?
Okay.
And then, on the southern end, it's saying 15.0 feet. So, is that, is that the variance that you're asking for?
I thought it was square, squared of the eastern border of the property.
There's been two surveys, I think that must be the most recent one.
Yeah, there are requests of 15-foot variance.
In our rear, rear setback?
In the rear setback.
In an I-1 light industrial is, according to schedule 3.7, is, is that 50 feet? Correct. So, I just wanted to make sure our numbers are right.
Okay.
You're saying it's 15 feet?
15, plus or minus.
Okay.
Any other questions from board members? Thank you, gentlemen. At this time, I'd like to open up the public hearing at 7:10. Any members from the public that wish to come up and make a comment on this item? Please do. Seeing none, at 7:10, I'll close the public hearing, and move on to building members, or building administrative comments. We did get a full packet related to the site plan that was in our packet of information. There's a letter included from Mr. Brian Ottman with Carlisle Wartman dated May 25th, which outlines a little bit of the request for the variance. Also in there are the review letters, and application, and the minutes from the planning commission of May the 12th. There's a review letter from Carlisle Wartman, May the 4th, 2016. There's also a letter from Sharp Engineering dated May the 4th. And then, finally, there is a letter dated May the 2nd from the Oxford Fire Department. Had a few items there, but this was, if you look at the minutes, this was approved at the planning commission, subject to a few conditions. One being the resolved issues of the planners' comments of May the 4th, unresolved issues from the fire department, and engineer's letter as well. So, moving on, we'll go to our findings of fact pursuant to 17.8C, that in reviewing the request for a variance, the following standards for determining practical difficulty shall be considered with no single factor being determinative. Number one, strict compliance with restrictions governing area, setback, frontage, height, ball density, and other non-use matters will unreasonably prevent, prevent the owner from using the property for permitted purpose or render ordinance conformity unnecessarily burdensome. Board member comments related to that?
I believe that applies to this case on the setback requirement of 25 feet.
I agree with that.
I'll concur. As do I. I agree with that. I think it will, I mean, if you're looking at 50 feet, and then, once you do that, you'll change the configuration of that building, it won't work.
Yeah, they're taking Oakdale as the, the front property, right?
Correct.
This would be the side.
It would be the side.
Side.
Okay, thank you. Number two, the variance will do substantial justice to the applicant as well as other property owners. It definitely applies.
Yeah, it definitely.
I agree. A lesser variance than what is requested would not give substantial relief to the applicant, and will be not more consistent with justice to the other property owners. I agree to that?
I agree.
Yeah, I think there is a lesser, there can be a lesser variance, but...
Very good.
Okay. Number four, the need for the variance is unique, is, is due to unique circumstances peculiar to the property, and not generally applicable in the area or to other properties in the same zoning district.
I believe that applies as well, due to the configuration of the property line in the existing building.
I agree. Yeah, given the configuration of the property and the way it kind of sets some, and odd shape to it. Number five, the problem and the resulting need for the variance has not been self-created by the applicant or the applicant's predecessors. I believe that applies as well?
Yeah, it does.
Yeah, I mean, with the change of the zoning and setback requirements, at one time, one would assume that, I think in most cases, we see that the variance, that the, that the building met some sort of requirements, but obviously with the change of the zoning requirements, it changed.
Right.
Okay. With that, we'll entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve ZBA 005.16, the address 595 South Lapeer Road, Oxford, Michigan, 48371, parcel 0426303008 and 009. That we approve a variance of 10 feet on the side setback, as discussed and cited in the documents here at the zoning board, as well as our findings of fact.
A variance of 10, meaning allowed to be 15 feet for the property?
They allow 15 feet.
Right. Based on the plan submitted?
Based on the information that plan, site plan submitted.
Do you have a second on that? Do you have a second?
I have a second there.
All right, motion and seconded? Any discussion? Deanna, in a matter that we don't have a secretary?
Hannah Coste?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Bob Plant?
Yes. Motion. Variance is granted. Okay, moving on to item 7B. This is ZBA 006.16, proposed 26-unit site condominium located on four separate parcels, totaling 95.2 acres. The property ID is 0436200-028-030-031 and -032. It is zoned SF1 suburban farms. The applicant is North Oakland Woods Development, LLC, 1240 Shepherd's Lane, Oxford, Michigan, 48371. The approval of this application, as submitted, would require a variance according, according to zoning ordinance 65A, article 11.3B, road length. As I did with the previous application, there are certain procedures we'll follow, very similar to the first one. Is the applicant here? Please state your names for the record.
Peter Barakoff, developer.
Regan Barakoff, developer.
And I'm Jim Scharrow with Keefe Engineering, and I get to do the thing.
Good evening, Mr. Scharrow, how are you?
I am just fine.
Please, tell us what you, what you're here for.
Effectively, this is a request of 478 feet in length from your variance, or from your standards, which require the maximum cul-de-sac length of a cul-de-sac to be 1,000 feet in length. There are several factors, which I pointed out on the variance request, as required for the application. There are six items which I think are extremely important in relationship to this. If, has the board had an opportunity to review that, or...
We have, and if you'd like to go through them, that's fine.
Okay, I can quickly go through them, because they, they are very pertinent to this particular development. The first one is that, many, many years ago, in 2004, when you had a different ordinance, your maximum length of cul-de-sac was 1,500 feet. This plan was exactly the same as submitted then, as it is now, and that road was designed to be underneath the 1,500 feet, as, as it is. The same plan which is approved right now, and that plan received preliminary approval from the planning commission, and considering the, the economy and the times, the development failed to take any further action. But, I guess, is a situation where this has been seen by the planning commission underneath your previous zoning ordinance. Secondly, the figure, the physical configuration of this site with the many ponds that are on the site, also, the fact that there are no roads to connect to that would preclude us from designing this cul-de-sac, or designing the development in another form, that could preclude us asking for this variance. That's item number two. Item number three is, in 2010, the existing cul-de-sac that, that is on the property, which is a length of 1,380 feet, or 380 feet more than what the ordinance requires, was approved by the zoning board of appeals as the first phase of this development. And that cul-de-sac was constructed, the road, the private road was built in conformance with Oxford Township standards for private roads, and that road exists today. So, there is some record of a approval of a variance in excess of 1,000 feet on this particular piece of property. If you look at the plan, you'll note that there's an additional road as part of this plan, which loops over to Bar Road. That road limits the length of the cul-de-sac, the existing cul-de-sac, to 375 feet. So, that's the reason why, I mean, we, what we've done is taken one non-conforming cul-de-sac and made it cul, made it conforming, and then, the balance of the extension of the cul-de-sac to the distance as, as shown on the plans, requires the additional variance for that additional cul-de-sac. Additionally, the Oxford Township Fire Department had no problems with this when we went in front of the planning commission. There was a physical problem with one of the dry, dry hydrants that, that was on the site, and has been constructed, and was constructed when the original gravel road was built, that I assume has been taken care of. The fire marshal requested a suggestion that we put in another dry hydrant, and we have taken his turn, his words to heart, and, as my letter states, that additional dry hydrant will be constructed in the areas of units 16 to 18. Lastly, I took a look at your ordinance, and kind of had a feeling for, if you allow a 1,000-foot cul-de-sac on a private, with a private-approved road, that, that cul-de-sac could literally be constructed in any zoning classification that the township currently has. So, if you, if you looked at the zoning ordinance, and you looked at the frontages of R3, R2, and R1, which obviously vary in size, without any type of a variance, a 1,000-foot cul-de-sac could have a possibility of 15 units in R3, 19 units in R2, and as many as 28 in R1, with 80-foot, and that would be by ordinance. That could be allowed to be constructed without any variances at all. You will note that our plan, if approved, there's only 13 parcels that will have frontage on this road, less than any other scenario that could possibly exist by ordinance. There's one other thing that I wanted to point out, because I, I listened to what was being mentioned before, when in your packages you have approval letters and minutes of previous planning commission meetings, you will note that at the previous planning commission meeting, we actually, we're looking at the possibility of approaching the zoning board of appeals for two variances. One, of course, is this configuration, this cul-de-sac, and the other one was a possibility of asking for a waiver from hard surfacing the roadway. We have, if you note by the variance that we're asking for, you'll note that there is no request for that at this time, and in the general notes for the plan that was submitted to you, it clearly states that all the roadways will be built in conformance with your private road ordinance, which requires hard surfacing, and that means that the existing gravel cul-de-sac will be hard surfaced, and we are not asking for that variance, which was on the table at the planning commission, but obviously, they couldn't take any action on it. I think this is pretty straightforward, at least in, in my opinion. We've, we've done everything that we can to design this thing in accordance with the configuration of the property. It's the same plan that was on the books from years ago, and we are respectively asking for a variance of 375 feet, I think that's what I, the number came out to be, no, 478 feet, to, to design and to continue the plan for the development of this site condominium. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Any comments, questions for the applicant? The applicant's engineer, certainly at the moment?
Not that I kick out yet.
Anything else? Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
It is now 7:24. I will open up the public hearing. Members from the public that have comments on us, if you please come forward, state your name and address for the record. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Gil Saronick, address 1449 White Hawk, Oxford, 48371.
Good evening.
We received this letter about a week ago, which is the first time we were made aware of the construction request on this property. Since we're a neighbor, we're more concerned about really what's going on, and how that's going to affect our quality of life where we currently live. Questions I came up with is, is this a multi-dwelling condo? How many floors? How many units per building?
This is what's called a site condominium, meaning it's just like a lot, but it's done through the land, the land's being condominiumized. It's a single-family home.
Single-family. Good to know. Thank you.
You're welcome.
What is the minimum square foot requirement?
Well, they would need to meet the requirements of the SF1 zoning for the home, or the square footage of the land.
The home.
For that one, I'd have to do a little research on.
Yeah, I can see it's a square foot.
Could you check that one for me, please?
I would accept answers from the proposed engineer.
That question was raised at the planning commission?
Will you come to the mic, Mr. Scharrow?
That, that, that question was raised at the planning commission level, and I believe that the square footages that were being beaten around were somewhere in the range of about 2,500 square feet. Let Peter answer that, he's just a developer.
That's something that we would be bringing to the final. We're, but we're planning on 2,000 minimum on the ranches, probably 2,400 square feet on the Colonials, somewhere in that range. With side-turn garages, you know, we want to dress them up nicely and look sharp.
All right, very good, thank you.
Okay, I might also point out, the term condominium is, is a phrase that's thrown around, and everybody thinks condominium as, as multiple, but that's not the case. Effectively, these are one hall, one house per two and a half acres.
Freestanding?
Freestanding house on a two and a half acre parcel, which will be recorded in accordance with the condominium law of the state of Michigan, rather than the subdivision act. I mean, for all intent and purposes, you don't know, you can't see the difference driving through one to the other. And, quite honestly, I would say 95% of all new developments right now are condos, but they, they look like some. They look like some.
All right, thank you. The other question I have refers to utilities. We're fortunate enough to have underground utilities where we currently live. What are the proposed utility, the construction of the utilities?
On their plan that they had submitted, note number 14, all utilities shall be installed underground, Detroit Edison, telephone and cable. So, it's all underground pursuant to their plan.
Excellent. We also plan on bringing in natural gas. We have it at Bar Road, and we also have it at Scipper Road, and we're just... That's one of the benefits we have, yeah. What about roads? The, the roads within the, connecting all the parcels? You said they're going to be finished roads?
They will be hard-surfaced.
Hard-surfaced. What about water and sewer?
It's well and septic out there, isn't it? It's well and septic.
Okay. What about lighting?
There is a note on their plan, no lighting is, is proposed.
I'm done. Thank you very much.
Anyone else from the public? Please come forward, state your name and address. Before you get started, has anyone, have you guys seen this plan? More than happy to share with you. We'll take a five-minute. 5:00, I would like to call the recess over. Can we have our plans back? All right, we are back on, on the record, right, Deanna?
Yes.
Okay. Just, again, for the purpose of everyone here, this is not the planning commission, this is the zoning board of appeals. is the Zoning Board of Appeals. The only matter we're here this evening on is the length of the dead-end cul-de-sac. That's the only thing we can have any authority on whatsoever. So we're more than happy to try to answer your questions. I hope by taking that five-minute recess and seeing the plan helped everyone understand what the project is and what the request is. So with that, please.
Before I state my name, and is there a, well, my name is Jeff Holland. I live at 1375 Bar Road in Oxford 48370.
Okay.
This is my neighbor.
I'm Michael Dovell, and I live at 1150 Bar Road.
Thank you.
And like the rest of our neighbor, my neighbors, we, I, we received this notice about a week ago, and really had no idea what's going on, other than seeing a few survey flags in our various yards, and, but looked like some construction taking place back in the woods. So upon seeing this with the description, road length, which to me, and I think to most of us, was pretty cryptic, it didn't really tell us anything.
Sure.
So, you know, my recourse at the time was to contact Deanna Pushing.
Deanna?
Yep. Is that, okay, there you are. There's my buddy. And of course, to me, it raised some questions, and Deanna was kind enough to...
And we got your email.
Excellent.
Yeah, she shared that with us.
She was kind enough to send me the plans, and then after looking at them, it was a little startling, to say the least, that there'd be a new road T-boning into my property and my neighbor's property down at the bottom of the hill. And again, I understand where you're coming from, you're talking about this zoning variance, but without knowing any more than what we know, and, you know, we didn't have a voice, I didn't have a voice to raise my concerns. And my main concern is that where this road is to be punched out is on the, is on a curve. And if I look down my driveway toward that curve, which is an S-curve, you really can't see where this road's going to come out. And if you look at where this road, again, is proposed to come out, it's between two curved signs. There's a sign that says curve, and if you come from the other direction, there's a sign that says curve, and there's supposedly a road going to be punched out between that. So I'm not here to get you to change the Planning Commission's decisions, but without having a voice in any of this process up until now, felt this was our only recourse. And I guess, at least my question, I think some of the others, we had the same question, what is our next step? You're going to approve or not approve this zoning variance, that's what you're here for.
Correct.
And you're going to move on to a next phase. What is that next phase? Is there another Planning Commission meeting? Is that the time for us to come and talk to the Planning Commission? Or what would your advice be?
Well, we're here to just slowly work on the variance for the dead-end cul-de-sac length. I believe the Planning Commission has...
They'll have another meeting.
What's that?
They'll have another final site...
The final site plan.
And you can be heard at that time. If you want notification, just get a piece of paper back there and start jotting down your email, and when it hits the agenda, I can send you the agenda and let you know it's going to be on there. I can't tell you how quickly they're going to come back and put it on there. I don't know all what they have to have. It might be a month, it might be next Planning Commission, I'm not sure what their plans are, but just leave your, grab a pad, a piece of paper back there, leave me your email, and I'll send you the agenda.
And as you can see, it was a bit startling to the neighborhood.
I'm sure.
That this, what appears to be an excellent piece of property, and it sounds like it's going to be developed in a nice way, I mean, meeting all your standards with, but on the other side of that is the changing of the environment that we live in, and what could be a cut-through road that'll increase, significantly increase the traffic on a narrow road now, where they won't even let the school buses go there because of safety concerns. So to us, it's an issue, and I think it's something that we will take your advice and follow through.
I appreciate your comments in that regard.
A short time ago, you said a short time ago that this discussion today was to answer the question about the variance, the extension, whether it was 1,000 or an additional 500 feet.
Yes, that's what we're here for this evening.
It is not about this new road that is proposed off of the initial cul-de-sac and entering Bar Road.
It is not. Back in 2010, this board granted a variance, Mr. Schauer mentioned that in his opening statement. As a part of that, if you look in the minutes, there was a suggestion made that future development of that property, a future extension of the cul-de-sac, would require some sort of cross-connection, such that cul-de-sac couldn't get infinitely long. There needed to be a secondary means of egress-ingress to this site. You can't have a cul-de-sac that's 2,000, 3,000 feet long. It's just not safe. So that's in the minutes from, and it's in the May 10th, 2010 minutes.
And not to argue the point, but, you know, if you look at other developments, there are many that are, several that are one-way in and one-way out, that are, you know, Harmony Hills, there's, it looks like almost the same scenario exists that you're saying now shouldn't exist.
Well, I'm not, I don't know the...
Again, you're not permission...
Right. And I don't know the history of that, to be honest with you.
Right.
But I only have a book of rules I have to play by.
Absolutely.
And we all have to play by and adjudicate accordingly.
Well, as Jeff has pointed out, we are concerned, because this is the first information of time we've heard about this.
As you should be. I would be concerned as well.
Probably the only opportunity we have as neighbors to present our concerns.
Yeah, you also have the Planning Commission for the final site plan.
Hopefully, the minutes from this will reflect to the Planning Commission that it isn't a one-voiced opinion, that we do have a concern.
Understood.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else from the public? Going once. Going twice. I will close the public hearing at 7:42. Moving on to building administrator comments, there was a whole packet of stuff, again, just like the previous item. There's a letter from Carlisle Wartman dated May 25, 2016. Gives a little history on the site and what we're here for this evening. Also in there, there is the written request from KEFT Engineering, the applicant, the application for the site. There are the minutes, so the summary, the motion and the voting at the Planning Commission, which was held on May 12, 2016, where this was approved, 6 to 1. There were, based upon the following condition, any unresolved issues with the Township Planner's Letter, variances be approved, unresolved issues with the engineers, unresolved issue with the Fire Department, and ensure that a dry hydrant is operational. And that was, again, voted on 6 to 1. There is a letter from Carlisle Wartman, again, May the 20, or excuse me, April 27. There is a letter from the Fire Department, or excuse me, Sharp Engineering, dated April There's also a letter from the Oxford Fire Department, April 18. A letter from the Oakland County Sheriff's Department, and then finally, a letter from the Parks and Rec Department. And also attached are those minutes from the May 10, 2010 ZBA meeting related to that. Any questions or additional comments from board members? Mr. Banachowski, anything?
I reserve the right to come back.
What's that?
I reserve the right at the moment.
Sure, absolutely. Floor's always open. Mr. Bailey? Mr. Walter? Anything?
Okay, I remember now.
Okay.
Are we looking for a variance of an additional, what is it, 480 feet?
478 feet.
Additional?
Yeah.
That's what we currently have, and, okay.
Because currently, a dead end's at that cul-de-sac, you see?
Yep.
So they've gotten, they've made it conforming with that crossroad, the bar?
Right.
So now they've extended it down to make it, that's what their request is for, to make the cul-de-sac extend farther south.
Okay.
Mr. Walters, Mr. Bailey, anything?
No.
All right. We'll move on to our findings of fact. Pursuant to Article 17.8C, "In reviewing a request for a variance, the following standard shall be, for determining practical difficulty shall be considered, with no single factor being determinative. Number one, strict compliance with restrictions regarding area, setback, frontage, height, bulk, density, or other non-nu spanners will unreasonably prevent the owner from using the property for a permitted purpose or render ordinance conformity unnecessarily burdensome." Board member comments? Applies, doesn't apply?
I don't think so.
Doesn't apply?
I think it would make it unnecessarily burdensome.
You know, there's, the property's unique in terms of the lakes that are in there, ponds, right? And, you know, they could do some, I guess there's some, maybe some other considerations they could make, but they're doing their best they can for the minimum acreage there and the lot width that the development and Planning Commission had already proposed. I think, I do agree with the findings of fact, number one there.
Mr. Banachowski, anything?
Yeah, I don't believe it will unreasonably prevent the owner from using her property. Basically, what we're looking at is the 478-foot extension. So I think they knew what they were going into with this, so at this point, I would suggest that the property still could be used for the permitted purpose. They may just have to adjust some of these sites themselves.
Yeah, I agree. I think you could, you could make it conforming if you wished.
Yeah.
You could, I mean, some of the lots could get bigger back there. All right, moving on. Number two, the variance will do substantial justice to the applicant as well as other property owners.
I'm six and, six and one and a half dozen on the other with this one.
Yep.
Substantial justice to the applicant, I'm not so sure to the property owners, as was mentioned in the, from some of the landowners adjacent to that. At this point, we're basically dealing with the one side of the road and the length as opposed to the new additional road, but I think there is some concern here from the homeowners.
Mr. Walters, Mr. Bailey?
I agree with Larry. I mean, we're looking at the additional 478 feet.
Yes.
For our decision.
Correct.
And I guess one would tie to the other. I mean, the extension is because we're putting in a secondary road for excess and egress, and therefore, they're looking to expand the current road and the cul-de-sac. With respect to that, I think they're looking to say, okay, we can extend that because we're putting in a secondary road. Once again, I believe it's a six and one, half dozen of the other, substantial justice to the applicant. Property owners, I'd still say it's up in there. I think there's still some concern on their part.
I would agree with Mr. Banachowski in that regard, absolutely.
Yes.
All right, moving on. The lesser variance in request would not give substantial lease to the applicant, and will not be more consistent with justice to other property owners. So obviously, a lesser variance would be that, to reduce the length of that cul-de-sac. Comments?
Yeah, no comment on that one.
I think that one applies.
Well, a lesser variance, I mean, would get, would not, certainly not give substantial justice to the applicant.
Correct.
It would restrict, I mean, there's certain lot requirements that he's meeting. He's meeting those particular requirements dimensionally. He's required to be a certain square footage of a lot, and he's doing that. I'm not sure what is, what the situation is in the other surrounding areas, so I'm not 100% sure that necessarily applies. Any other comments? Number four, the need for the variance is to do a unique circumstance as procures of the property, and not generally applicable to, in the area or to other properties in the same zoning district.
I'd say this doesn't apply. However, in looking at the site plan and the size of the lots compared to what's required in that area, I think it goes beyond the planning of this site, that they have larger lots. So I see it as a positive. Most cases, everyone's trying to squeeze more on to an area, but in this case, we're not looking to squeeze more in because we're still above what the acreage is, I think, required for this particular spot.
I'm not necessarily sure that's true, because these are all, the minimum requirement's two and a half acres in SF.
SF1, right.
And they're proposing roughly average about 2.54. Getting a little more? I don't think it's that much to really be that large.
And again, the site is unique with the wetlands, the open water. With the, to maintain the size of that minimum requirement for lot areas...
Right. You have two, you have a width requirement of those lots being 200 feet. I mean, you've got a depth in the wetland areas and the topography that's there. You can't put a secondary road in and create more lots to avoid having a dead-end cul-de-sac. Yeah, and the applicant did bring up a pretty interesting point related to other zoning districts. If you look at a road that would meet the requirements of 1,000 feet in any other district, you certainly would have more homes in there. Any other comments?
Yeah, and he was referring to R3, 2, and 1, right?
Right. Right. You could certainly, obviously, because of the widths of the lots, you could get more lots on that dead-end road than what they're proposing, and still meet the requirements of the ordinance for that particular district. Okay, moving on. The problem and the resulting need for the variance has not been self-created by the applicant or the applicant's predecessors. Applies, doesn't apply?
Kind of think it has been self-created.
Well, certainly because of its design, it has been created, self-created, the distance and the need for the additional length. The only thing it hasn't is the uniqueness of the property and requiring it and allowing for it to happen. That's what's, that's what I think is the, is this issue there. You don't have the ability on this largely acreage to do that, and meeting the requirements dimensionally of the property. That's my opinion. Mr. Walters, any comments?
No, I agree with you. I mean, I'm looking at the surrounding area as well, and they're all SF1, they're going to have to meet the same requirements as does the plan, the site plan here, too, so. And I agree that they, that it wasn't self-created by the predecessor.
Yeah, it wasn't, for sure. Any other comments? With none, I'll move on to entertaining a motion in this regard.
I'll make a motion in regards to ZBA 00616, proposed 26-unit site condominium located on four separate parcels totaling 95.2 acres. Parcel ID number 0436200028030, 031, and 032, zoned SF1 suburban farms. Applicant, North Oakland Woods Development LLC, 1240 Shepherd's Lane, Oxford, Michigan, To approve this application as submitted, and it would require the variance of the lengthening of the road by 478 feet. And this in accordance with the findings of fact and the information provided in our packet.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mr. Bailey.
Seconded by Mr. Bailey. Would the maker of the motion add that this variance or this motion is based on the plan submitted dated 4/5/16?
I'll second that. It'll be added. Any other discussion? Seeing none.
Um, just like to, to make one comment here real quick, is that everyone looks at these site plans as being a definitive line, especially when people move in there. I, I know we've had issues in, around our subdivision, that everyone looks at this as saying, this is my property line, people want to put up fences, and they want to do all different kinds of other stuff. I think there's specifically for these types of site plans, there's a no-man's land between these buildings, I think, from these actual lines, it's supposed to be eight foot. So what we're looking at here, someone says they own that piece, well, I think the, the owner and the person proposing this, make sure that people know about this, okay? Because it's, it's not true to form. Other than that, that's it?
Okay. Secretary, would you please call the roll? Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Vanikowski?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Raster's staying.
Motion carries.
And real quick, before everyone leaves, if people have concerns that they're not notified with respect to the, the planning commission or some other function, that they go to the township board meetings and let them know that you, that you'd like this changed, we send our notification out, it's in our bylaws, and for the rest of the groups, I, I think you need to address that with the township, okay?
Or follow the different township.
Well, then you probably need to go to Addison as well, and make sure that they're notifying you. All right? And when it's in conjunction.
I, I actually did that, and they were not notified.
Okay. Then you'll have to address that with Addison, but go to the...
Addison was not notified.
Oh, they weren't? Okay.
Addison won't get notified.
I think they were.
No, Addison Township does not get notified. Everybody within 300 radius square feet of the property on a zoning board of appeals notice would be notified. As for abliminary and a final site plan, if they're, they're meeting the ordinance and they're not doing anything that requires a public hearing, you will not know.
I see that, because that's what happened.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Fair enough.
Yeah, they won't.
Thank you.
Because I don't notify them. I don't hear.
Okay. Okay. Moving on to board member comments. Any board member comments?
No.
Seeing none, moving on to adjournment.
I move to adjourn.
Move in support, all in favor? Aye? Opposed? Be adjourned.